All right, good evening. Mark is not able to make it tonight, and so in his absence, I'm going to attempt to muddle my way through chairing this meeting. Call up Tremont Planning Board Meeting Order on Tuesday, May 28th. Role call, we've got Ben Harper, Beth Scott, Brett Whittheam, myself, Lawson Wilson, and I'll take a motion to excuse Mark Good.
I still move.
Second.
Motion and second to excuse Mark Good, all in favor? Thank you. Adjustment or adoption of the agenda? We've got agenda in front of us, two items, old business and new business, any changes suggested? Take a motion to adopt the agenda as written.
Time will be dropped, the agenda presented.
I'll second.
Motion second to adopt the agenda, any discussion? All in favor? Pass, thank you. No public minutes, minutes from the 23rd are in our packet.
Correction, that was, it's April 23rd, not March 23rd on the agenda.
Thank you, the minutes are correct that say April 23rd, but the agenda says, thank Any changes to the minutes or edits?
I make a motion, minutes be accepted as presented.
Second.
Motion second on the table to accept the minutes as presented, any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. Public hearing, no public hearing tonight, so we'll move into the site plan review ordinance, and I'll introduce Patrick Lyons who's here tonight who's representing the planning board and is working for the town on this. Brett, you got here late and didn't get to meet Patrick, have you guys worked together yet? Not great, sure, anyway. We've met everybody else. And so before we start the performance standards, we have the option to move into executive session, this is our first time meeting with Attorney Lyons. If we wanted to discuss things with Patrick in private, we could do so by moving into executive session, we'd make a motion, we would excuse the public, we would speak with Patrick about sort of the process or the rights, we would not deliberate the application at that time, that should happen in the public meeting, but it would give us an opportunity to ask questions about interpretation of the ordinance and our process.
I'd make a motion that we go into executive session.
Now I have to recuse myself from...
The application?
From...
Right, do you recuse yourself from...
No. Talking to the planning board attorney, no.
Okay. I think you can make, you could second.
Okay.
Any of us could second. You have not yet recused yourself? You're still participating in the meeting?
Right.
Okay, yeah, Patrick, do you think?
I think it would be fine for Scott to participate in executive session prior to taking up the application.
Okay, thanks for that. Did you second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion?
Can we have the motion that is on the paper that I gave you, Jesse said there was a specific way that it should be said.
Thanks, Katie. And the other piece, we should clarify, I guess as part of the motion, if we would like Katie to participate in the executive session or not to participate in the executive session, we should clarify that.
I feel she should participate in the session.
Great, well, you would amend your motion, Ben?
Is this, I respectfully suggest passage of the motion to go into executive session for consultation between the board and its attorney concerning pending or contemplated litigation as permitted by main revised statute 405.6-8, according to...
Will you add that you'd like to include Deputy CEO?
I'll second.
Great, motion second on the table, any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Okay, motion passes, so we're not going to go into executive session, which means we're going to ask the public to what, wait outside? To wait outside?
Unless there's a smaller room we can all be in and make a statement here.
I think it's a good enough, nice enough weather that we're going to invite you to enjoy the outdoors for our executive session, and we will invite you back in upon our conclusion. All right, so we're back in session after executive, back in public session after the executive session, reviewing the site plan review and the land use ordinance for the Captain's Tales takeout application by Tina Lunt. There's a form present, and this application is before us for both the land use ordinance and the site plan review ordinance, of which the planning board has jurisdiction. We received application materials from the applicant in addition to submissions by the abutters through their attorney, Daniel Plegge, and both sort of the original application and response from the attorney, and then some supplemental materials since the public hearing. Is there any conflict of interest on the board before we proceed?
Well, I need to recuse myself because my family has, probably would be doing some work for the Lunts if this project goes through.
Great, thank you. Do we need, we don't need a motion or anything, that just happens? Thank you, Beth. We had a public hearing about a month ago, and we may welcome comments from the applicant or the abutters about specific items, but we'll limit that to specific questions and address that as we go throughout, but in general, we won't be accepting public comment tonight. I think that's it, that's it. Great, so before we start, we're starting, we have started, so we're going to address the threshold question that, what you're...
Yeah, do you want to say anything about the record, about the, do you already do that, diagnose that maybe, about what's in?
What's in, yes, we've received the application with additional supplemental materials submitted since then by the applicant, and submissions by the attorney, Attorney Plegge, in two different batches.
They're all in the record.
And they're in the record in front of us today, yes. So one of the things that has come up throughout this, our review, is sort of dimensional standard of the proposal. Is it a permitted use to have the primary use be on the land, and I'm going to refer to the RV zone requirements, the lot standards, which cite that the minimum lot area per residential dwelling is 40,000 square feet, which this site has. And then the question becomes, can there be an accessory use on that site, and is what is proposed an accessory use? I think I'll open that up for discussion and comment by the board to begin.
Yeah, great. So, yeah, we, and this was an issue raised by Mr. Plegge in a filing dated April 2nd, probably updated as well, that talks about, well, the thinking that in order to have a residential principal use and also another principal use, a commercial use, you would need 80,000 square feet as opposed to, I think it's 60 and some change. You know, we've talked about that, I'll say first, you know, I like the project, I like seafood, I think that having these sorts of things in town is a good thing, but we do have, you know, land use ordinance with dimensional requirements, and so one of the things we're stuck on is the idea that the restaurant would be an accessory structure or use, and the words that I'm tripping on anyway is it's incidental accessory or subordinate to the principal use or structure. And I think it's, it would be, I'll put myself in the shoes of, you know, if we were to make the determination that it was, and then that went on appeal, I'm not sure how we'd try to look at that, I'm not sure that footprint of that, of that restaurant or takeout, whatever you want to call it, as proposed right now, would be, could be found reasonably to be incidental or an accessory or subordinate to the principal use of residents. So that's kind of what we want to hear about, you know, the applicant's thoughts on that, the abutters' thoughts on that, that's what we're having a hard time, you know, I've tried to come up with scenarios in my head about how, you know, how does that work, or how is there possible to change the application? We're not here to do that, you know, we're looking at the application as it's proposed, and that's what we've, we've talked about with our lawyer, we've debated, and that's kind of what we're, despite the fact that I really want a lobster roll over there, it's a tough one to get past.
Before I open it up for...
Is that fair?
That's great, yeah, and I just wanted to give Ben a chance to add or shift anything.
As much as we'd like to approve projects, we've got to go by what it says in the ordinance, and I think this is maybe a stumbling block. And I'm not sure how we get over that.
Great, yeah.
Help us, help us.
Yes, I'll invite Derek and the applicant to sort of help us think this through.
It's a little bit weird because I feel like we shouldn't be helping, we should be listening for direction on what a determination of the structure and the space is supposed to be allowed and used. It should be clear cut from this plan to decide square footage of lot, use of building, square footage of buildings, those things, we should be directed by the board. So I, we still feel that the building is much smaller, it's used in a much shorter period of time, so it should fall under an accessory based on shorter time, size. It just seems like common sense there for us, I mean, it may, it seems incidental to the primary structure that it's used all year long, but it's much larger. I guess that's our only position on how we feel about its use, and then we'll look at the board to make a decision on that. If the board decides it cannot be that large, the applicant is willing to reduce the size, but I feel that is wrong.
So you raised an interesting point, the seasonality of it, so, you know, if it's open for one day, you know, could you say it's incidental or accessory or subordinate? But, you know, as you, and I don't know, seasonality is an interesting one.
Do you know, did you state...
I would say certainly though during the time it's open, like, I think you look at it, I think you have to look at the, whether the property is compliant, you know, at all times, and so I think that, I think the counterargument to that would be, and I'm just, you know, trying to have discussion here, would be that, well, okay, it is seasonal, but on the days that it is open, it, one could argue that it's, it's a pretty good sized building, it's, and it might not be incidental to, you know, it's not like it's making food just for the people that live in the house, right, I mean, it's a, it's a business, it's not incidental to the residents. So I think that, I get what, I thought about that, I was like, well, it is seasonal, does that factor into it, but I, I think it does if you're look, if your timeframe is a year, but I think the timeframe has to be, at each moment in time, is the use of the property complying with, with what we, the code. So I don't, what do you think?
I guess to take that further, if, if I threw a festival on my house once a year, that still feels like it's incidental. So you're like one day a year thing, that does feel incidental.
Yeah, yeah.
And so if it's a month a year, well, I don't know, if it's six months a year, I don't know, and so that starts to feel a little bit different. The, I think that incidental, which is not a word that I use on a daily basis, so it's like not, you know, something that I'm grappling with, I think, anew, but certainly it should be less, you know, smaller square footage than the house. It is, we're there, that's great. When you add picnic tables and parked cars and people, is the sort of impact on the site incidental to the residential? It doesn't feel that to me, it feels like, at least, or maybe only during those July, August, September months, it would be not incidental. Yeah, but it's not a conclusion, but it's a thought. I want to give Dan a chance to speak, but before I do, are there other questions for Derek?
I don't want to say anything.
Yeah, you might not, but, other questions for Derek or other thoughts?
So, so in that thought process, you are not allowing accessory use businesses in town?
Well, definitely accessory uses are permitted that are incidental, accessory or subordinate.
As a business, but then what then defines its thresholds for size and use, so what comes to apply there?
It's an interesting question, do we have any? Do we have any?
Versus the lobster.
That's a residential...
No, I'm sorry, it has an accessory use.
That's one.
In the restaurant, where it wants an accessory use.
To...
The water, and that is different.
Okay. Yeah, I'm trying to think if we actually have any, you know, you've got home occupation, which is, you know, whatever, selling cookies or something, out of your house.
I just caution the road you're going down for the future business of the town.
Yeah.
Think about that.
Yeah, it's the, it's the, well, it's the square footage issue, right, I'm trying to think of why...
Isn't there, is there like a clear, like, how much?
Well, if you had 80,000 square feet, we wouldn't be talking about this, right, you could, you could do that, we wouldn't be...
Because that's too primary.
That's right, that's right.
Do you think that's going to affect it on traffic or anything that's going to go in there, whether that building is 20 feet or 30 feet long, or 40 feet?
So it's not a traffic thing for me, like, for me, I'm just looking at the, looking at the language, and, and I, and look, it's not, it doesn't do, you wouldn't focus any good either, if we say fine, and it's appealed and you lose because we made a clear error because the language doesn't even support what we've done, you know, it's got to, and it just, you know, I take your, your point though, Derek, and I don't, I don't know if there's any other residential, RV, if there's any other businesses...
Where the accessory use...
That are, I don't know.
That aren't home occupations.
That aren't home occupation.
We'll get there, thanks, free emotions.
I think, you know, I think that it would be, if you've got less than 80,000 square feet, it becomes, I think it does become challenging if you have a principal residential structure and use, to also, if you have less than 80,000, to also have a business, because it's, because it would need to be incidental accessory and subordinate to the, to the residential use, and then, and I don't, there aren't going to be many businesses that fit. You careful, Doug?
I mean, I've got employees that operate out of there, and I live in the back of the building, prime example, same situation, and you guys, when they did, not the last time I was reviewed, but the first time I went through subdivision...
How many, how much square feet do you have there?
I mean, I've got plenty, obviously. But, but same idea, it's no different, the, it's...
Well, I think it is. It is, because you've got the square footage.
Because you've got enough square footage for your business, principal use, in your residential. You've got 40,000 square feet.
You want to say, you want to say look?
But how, but how is this, how is this different?
Because it's, it's the, it's the lots, it's the how much land's there.
But your ordinance says you can do it.
Well...
Yes.
You seem convinced, which is useful.
But with no, with no legal opinion, with the, with the town not having any legal opinion other than Dan and, and the applicant, that really puts him in a tough spot, I mean, he's going to sacrifice potential storage space for, who knows, plates, cups, anything, or something...
I think, Mike, you're thinking about the square, we're talking about the square footage of the building.
That's what I'm talking about.
And we're talking about the square footage of the lot.
Hey, we're talking about the lot.
The lot is 60,000 square feet.
If it was 80,000 square feet, I don't care how big the building is.
Well, right.
Right.
Well, then you're not worried about accessory at that point.
That's right.
That's right.
So now we're saying is it accessory?
To a residential building.
Right, and...
And it is, part of the year.
Yeah, I know.
I mean, you, you don't have, you don't, the whole purpose of coming, of coming back here was for legal opinion.
So you, what you've got to decide is whether you think that that is accessory, incidental, accessory and subordinate to a residential use. I mean, that's, that's, that's what you've got to...
Which it sounds like Mike's convinced of.
Yeah, I know, but it's like, I think it's just a tough one, you know, it's just a tough...
If they did look at it, they wouldn't be having the restaurant.
Right, yeah, well, I thought about the, call it employee housing, but I don't know, you say it's too big.
I don't think that, I don't like that. Great, Dan, I'm sort of welcome your thoughts or contributions as well.
So I gave you guys another memo, just, and it wasn't really arguing, but it was a description of some of the cases where the state courts have discussed exactly this argument, and in the Bovin versus Stanford decision, I got into exactly the discussion that, Brett, you were just having, that you were just hard pressed to find any situation in town where there isn't a restaurant that's been found to be an accessory to a residence. And that's part of the analysis, is that that, the law court in that case said, you look to your town and the customs and the usage in your town, and is it customarily an accessory use? I'm not aware of anywhere that a restaurant is a customarily accessory use wholly dependent upon a residence, but if by chance there, you know, that happened, other than in a home occupation, then you'd look at that habit in your town and that history, there isn't one here. The essence of an accessory use or structure is, has to be, it has to be dependent upon the principal use, the principal use here is residential. So dependent, there really isn't a way, other than in a home occupation in Tremont, from my perspective, to make a business be wholly dependent upon the residential principal use. I can't think of a situation in Tremont where that would be the case, other than in a recognized home occupation. That's why I brought it up last time, but I understand, I do understand the distinction. Here, we're talking about two distinct uses, I mean, you can't get any more distinct from, you know, living in a house versus having a takeout restaurant with customers and lights and traffic and all of that stuff, there's two just completely entirely separate uses, and you have a structure, a principal structure for each use. You've also got some pretty substantial square footage for this restaurant structure. In, in, to me, when you look at, you know, the case that I think the chair was talking about last time, Shapley versus Schickles, there isn't a way, when you have to, when you get to the discussion of wholly dependent, whether one use, one structure is wholly dependent upon the principal use or structure, you really kind, you run into what I think is an impasse in a situation where you have two unlike uses and two major structures, and I think that's where we're stuck in this. So I, I think you need 80,000, minimum of 80,000 square feet in order to do this project.
I want to go back to your term of the wholly dependent, and I think that, or I understand that to mean that one can exist without the other, and are you suggesting that accessory or incidental means that without one, you wouldn't have the other? Is that, or am I misinterpreting it?
It, it means it has to be incidental, wholly incidental to the residential use. So what you're used to, what the, what the code enforcement officers in all these towns are used to, right, is you're doing sheds, garages, things like, those are accessory to the residential use. I want a place to put all of my lawn and garden equipment, right, I'm going to permit that.
Yep.
You know, those are customary accessory use, swimming pools can be a customary accessory structure to a, to a residence.
Yep.
A home occupation can be a customary accessory use, but in this town and most towns, home occupation has to be out of the same building. In, absent that, without that connection, I think you can't do it.
Thank you. Ben and Brett, other questions for Dan before he sits down? So I don't want to go like back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, but I do want to give the applicant an opportunity to speak, and sort of the applicant's, you know, respond, you know, opportunity for, to provide or burden of proof, and so I'll let you ask questions and share your other thoughts and stuff, and then we'll sort of close this session for final deliberations.
I was just thinking about it, I know Aaron and Paige both live above the seafood catch.
Uh huh.
So there's, there's a prime example of a residence business going on, I don't know the square footage of their property.
Sure.
It's pretty small, in my opinion.
Yep.
The house right on side, the parking lot, so there's a prime example of what's already being used.
Okay.
Ridges as...
Yeah, that, you know, I bet that would be, I bet their, I don't, I'm into their apartment, whatever, I bet it's probably, is it in the restaurant building?
It's on top.
It's on top?
Yeah, it's a store, and then there's a takeout there, I mean...
Yeah, they've got a big chunk of land there, I don't think anyone lives there.
I don't think anyone lives there now.
You were saying...
There's an example, I...
No, that's awful, yeah, yeah.
That's all I was saying, like you said, it doesn't happen very often, but there's at least one that I can think of off the top of my head, without, you know, going from place to place and going on.
Yeah, the, you know, with that, and the, with the catch, it's almost to me like the, that, that, the dwelling is subordinate to the restaurant.
Right, and I don't know if that's more or less...
That's a 600 square foot, it's a senior ordinance, you could do that if it's 600 feet or less.
That's my guess.
And I have a seafood catch, but, yeah.
So her having a permit in the house before for baking, is that in any sway?
Saying that the house is a...
She's had a permit for baking before.
For baking, but it's still a red, it's not a commercial structure.
That would be a home occupation, right, I think, probably.
Yeah.
So are you saying there's a, is there an ability to have a smaller square foot kitchen on the salon?
That's the million dollar question.
Where's the legal opinion?
Well, so you've got, there's, there's two things going on here interplay at the same time, right, you've got, one is the size, which is, you know, in the words in the, here, it's, well, I mean, even the word accessory, and I think, but the, the other piece that I'm, I don't know how, I don't know how I would, I don't know as I sit here today how I would vote on a hypothetical in the future, I don't know, but the thing I'd be thinking about is the, the issue of the, of that called second use being subordinate to the principal use, which means it's got to be somehow related, like, it's got to be, it's got to support the, the principal use unless you've got the full 80,000 square feet, so for like a house, I don't know, I...
And I need to say that a restaurant is supporting the, you know...
Yes, if she was living there and he's selling his own product out of the same place...
Yeah, I mean, that's the, yeah, that's the, yeah, yeah, yeah.
How much more do you want it?
Yeah, like, that's not bad. That's pretty good, actually.
That's what I'm saying, that's, that's an example, like, what example are you looking for, that is an example?
Yeah, yeah, Patrick.
So I'm, I'm Patrick Lyons, I'm the attorney for the town, and specifically for the planning board here tonight, so I'm not representing either side, so I'm here to help the planning board do their job properly and get to whatever, I don't... job properly and get to whatever, I don't, I'm not advocating for them to make a decision one way or the other, I just want them to make the decision properly. So I just want everyone to be, to know that's my goal. I would just say, rather than, Mike, what I wanted to raise is, I wouldn't start going down these hypotheticals, um, you can hear, you know, they, you know, entertain any, you know, propo- you know, at, you know, they're saying, these businesses may satisfy this and that, you should take that in, but ultimately, um, your job is to apply plain language of the ordinance, and so, um, you, you know, this question, this special question, I would advise the board to take it kind of stepwise, based on the plain language of the ordinance, but before you get there, you want, these are good, you know, examples for you to consider. I would not get into hypotheticals about this, this, or that you can, but I think really you wanna apply the facts of this situation to the ordinance.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you, thank you, Patrick.
I was thinking about the.
He's doing other questions for the applicant, and then if not, then I might sort of close the, like, public participation, and then we can deliberate and see if we can move towards a motion. Does that make sense to the board?
Yeah.
So, thank you, Dan and Derek. So I guess, sort of thinking out loud and walking through this, I think we've established that the forty thousand square foot per principal use establishes that there can be one principal use on this lot, and given that there is an existing residential use, that principal use is residential. The land use does permit accessory, uh, structures or uses, and so then the question becomes, is the, what is proposed, does that qualify for the accessory structural use? And when we look at the definition of that in the ordinance, that states that a use or structure which is incidental, accessory, and subordinate, all three, to the principal use or structure, is permitted. And. All right, so I think that's, that's the logic that I've got, that's the sequence. Am I, think I'm missing a piece, Patrick?
No, I think that, that makes a lot of sense. If, one thing, cause I wasn't here for the last meeting, did you guys get in, did you make any determination on the question of home occupation?
No.
So I would start maybe with, the way I think you would, the way I'm looking at it, and obviously I'll think you guys make the choice, but I would say whether or not the proposed use, we should determine whether or not it's a home occupation.
Okay.
If it is, then that's a permitted use and you can proceed with the application. If it's not a home occupation, is it an accessory?
I see, okay.
Is it a, is this use a proposed accessory use? Then if you determine it is, then you proceed with the remainder of the application. If it's not, if you determine it's not a accessory use, then by default, the proposed use becomes a principal commercial use, and then you go to the depth, the depth, the square footage requirement for the zone, and that's kind of the ultimate decision.
I see, that, that logic makes sense. Does that make sense, Ben and Brett?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would take them as individual motions.
Individual motions for each one, okay, so then.
Each, oh, sorry, my, each motion, you wanna have, so you're applying the language of the ordinance, the law, to facts, so wherever motion you raise, you should, um, you should state, you know, you know, the facts that you're relying on and, you know, ultimately making that decision.
Okay.
And that's the basis of your decision.
Okay.
So if you're looking at the language of a home occupation, you know, if it doesn't satisfy those standards or not, one way or the other, provide, if you think it does satisfy the standards, state what facts are in the record that support that, if you think it does not, state what factors that are in the record to support that decision, and then ultimately, someone makes a motion.
Great. So I, I'll start, I think, by looking at the home occupation definition, and I guess I'll, in the spirit of being thorough, go ahead and read that. An occupation or profession which is customarily conducted on or in a residential structure or property by the full-time permanent occupant of the dwelling unit, which is carried on in no more than twenty-five percent of the total square footage of the single-family dwelling unit, or located in an accessory building located on a property in an area equal to no more than twenty-five percent of the total square footage of the single-family dwelling unit, which employs no more than two persons other than the family members residing in the home, and which is clearly incidental and secondary to the use of the dwelling for residential purposes, and that does not change the character thereof. By way of illustration and not of limitation, the term home occupation shall include making foods such as breads, cookies, or preserves, rugs, birdhouses, fishing flies, and quilts. The term home occupation shall include both professional and personal services. Anything greater than twenty-five percent requires site plan review by the planning board approval under Tremont Site Plan Review Ordinance. The proposed restaurant structure floor plan is about fifty percent of the dwelling's square footage. And so by my reading of this, I'm seeing that the proposed structure is larger than twenty-five percent of the square footage of the single-family dwelling unit, and it would not, uh, qualify as a home occupation. Does that seem to make sense?
Yeah, I think that's right.
Is there anything else in that definition that would cover against?
We don't know, I don't think the application states clearly about like who, you know, conducted by the permit, full-time permit occupant of the dwelling unit, um, so I'm not sure that that, I'm sure, I'm not sure I would use that, or even employees no more than two persons other than family members residing in the home, those pieces of it feel hard to.
They weren't in, not in the record.
Correct, I only think that's in the record, one way or the other. Yeah, so I think that's all I'm seeing is the size of the floor plan, the size of the accessory building. I'll take a motion of that effect or other discussions or thought.
No, I think, I think that it does not meet the definition because of the square footers of the, um, I can make a motion.
Great.
So I will move that the, um, um, application does not meet the definition of a home occupation because the, um, square footage of the, um, accessory building is more than twenty-five percent of the total square footage of the single-family dwelling unit.
Second?
Second.
Motion's second on the table. Um, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. The, if it's not a home occupation, then we ask the question, is it an accessory use? And the definition of accessory structure or use, this is a use or structure which is incidental, accessory, and subordinate to the principal use or structure. Accessory uses, when aggregated, shall not subordinate the principal use of the lot. A deck or similar extension of the principal structure, or a garage attached to the principal structure by a roof or a common wall is considered part of the principal structure. And I think here we're asking, is the accessory use incidental, accessory, and subordinate? I'm sorry, is the proposed restaurant, uh, and eating area incidental, accessory, and subordinate to the principal use? And. We've heard that in terms of time throughout the year, that it is being u-, you know, there are times when it's not being used, and times when it is. What are your thoughts, Ben?
I think it does meet that requirement.
Can you share more?
Because of the, the timeframe when it's being used, it's only gonna be, uh, I'm assuming a summertime business, and I think that would make it incidental to the, where it's a primary, where it's a residence, which is U.T.R.
I think the piece for me is the, the idea about sort of being dependent upon the primary use, and is the accessory use. Does it rely on, or does it need the principal use? And I don't see that happening, or I, I don't think that it meets that threshold. And that you could have a restaurant without the house there. What do you think, Brett? Be it Patrick?
Oh, I just, um, I think that one of the cases decided by Attorney Boy, in his supplemental memo, updated May 21st, um, might be helpful in reading through those. So if you go to the second page of that, the first full paragraph, um, I think that way to frame it.
The essence of an accessory use or structure by definition is subordinate to or dependent upon a principal use or main structure. It is related to the primary use or structure by having a reasonable relationship with the primary use or structure, and by being, and by custom, being commonly, habitually, and by long practice established as reasonably associated with the primary use or structure. I think that's a sort of question about Tremont, and the question about the restaurant-house relationship, um.
And then just, the, the, and I think the questions of land area involved, um, the nature of the primary use, um, you know, the use made, um, of the, you know, the uses in the neighborhood, um, those are all things that go into it, but I think the, you know, one thing to look at, to think about is, um, you know, is this restaurant subordinate? Is it, um, incidental, accessory? You know, one way to think about that is physical occupation of space. How big is the restaurant? How big is the, the uses affiliated with the restaurant, parking tables, compared to the house on the lot? That's, that's one way, and that's, I raise that because that's a great way to, you've got data, you've got information in the record, for you to weigh those, that's one way to look at it. And so I think that I would encourage the board to discuss that. But then, yeah, I think the language, um, you know, a, a reasonable relationship with the primary use of structure is a full restaurant related to the primary use currently, which is the residence. So just another way to frame it.
Thank you, yeah. I see you're thinking hard, Brett.
Yeah, sure. So what do you, what do you think about tha- that, Ben? I mean, I, I think your, your comment is, is based on a, um, what's the word I'm looking for? The seasonality of, of the restaurant, uh, or takeout, I don't know what we're calling it here. And, and so you're looking at it over a year, or the season, or, you know, a year.
Over season, yeah.
Yeah, I, but I just don't know, I don't know if that's how it works. I don't know that that's how the courts look at it. I think they look at the use, uh, at, on a snap, you know, a snapshot in time. And I, you know, I, it's tough, I mean, I'm just looking at the, what am I looking at here? Sheet S one, the site plan. And, you know, if you just look at the lot and how it's gonna be used, I think it's gonna mostly be a restaurant, or a park, it's gonna be, you know, the tables and a lot of parking spots, employees, you know, and the house is kinda, so it's just, it's hard, it's hard for me to determine, as much as I would like to, that that is an accessory use, I just don't know, I think you lose that on appeal, I just think you do. And so you're better off actually probably getting a no and doing something different. I, you know, and I was sitting here right now, I was thinking, it's fif-, I think the current size of that is fifty percent of the house? You could go to twenty-five, and I think it'd be a home occupation, so long as you met the other stuff. Maybe, um, I don't know. But I think for me, it's just hard to get overall, call it the eighty thousand square foot problem.
What, what happens to the lot? What's the year? What happens to the lot when the restaurant's not operating, takeout?
I don't know.
Stores are traps.
Yeah.
Boat's there.
Yeah.
Is bait's there.
Yeah.
I mean, that, you could, you could argue that that is larger. I mean, ninety percent of that lot's full of lobster traps.
Yeah.
Every fall.
Yeah, in the off-season.
And they're two definitely connected, I mean, the fisherman doesn't live there, he ain't someone's catch in the takeout next door.
But I, like I said earlier, I think it's, for this area, it, you know, having seafood that is, the product is caught by the fisherman that owns the restaurant is, to me, is awesome. I wanna approve those every single time, but I, I'm just trying to figure out how to do it here without, you know, like I said, it does no good to get an approval and then go, like, I think you just look at this here, and if I were to color code that pink and this blue, and you will look, look at the relative, snapshot in time, taking the seasonality out of it, it, it just does not pass a straight face test to say that it's accessory or incidental, it just doesn't. And, and I, look, if you had eight, like I said, if you had eighty thousand square feet, I mean, we'd be signing off. And I think it's actually in the zone for the comp plan that we want development, I think it, it like, it literally is everything, it's X off all the boxes except, I'm just having a hard time.
Support maritime activities, exact words.
It's right, everything, I know.
Exact words in the comprehensive plan.
I know, I know. I know.
Exactly what we're going against now.
The seasonality piece, though, I just don't think it, I don't think it, I don't know, I don't know that it matters, I don't know how, I don't know how, cause you could kinda, it's gonna be, you could game it, and you could do different things, not saying anyone would, but.
It seems like the, the, the language in the court case about the reasonable relationship with the primary use, I think the seasonality doesn't help with that. It still doesn't have that relationship that is being commonly, habitually, and by long practice established.
It, it, it does, but I will say, here in this town, you know, it, it is not unusual for a, uh, fisherman to sell, you know, their goods from where they live.
Right.
You know, I was trying to figure out, you get Hodgston on the backside here that sells seafood. seafood. So when you start to think about the, you know,
Right.
what's it like around here, this is kind of what it's, a little bit what it's like. It's just unfortunate that we've got this math problem.
Yep. Yeah, Patrick?
Yeah, this is a really good conversation, and we got to get to the issue. I think another way to maybe simplify it is if you look at the definition, accessory use, which is something that is incidental, accessory and subordinate, that's the plain language in your ordinance, right? That's really where
Yep.
the best place to start and potentially. You can walk through it. Is this use incidental to residential use? Is this use accessory to residential use? Is this use subordinate to residential use? And you have, it has an and in there, right?
Mm-hmm.
So it has to be an and, so it has to satisfy all three. So if you find that any one of those threes doesn't satisfy, you know, that, that right there would, you know, support your determination one way or the other.
Is it clear, Patrick, if the use, we've been talking about the sort of snapshot view of the site plan and having the floor plan of, you know, the building, but also the parking and the eating. Is it clear that that is included in use? That we're appropriately looking at the aggregate of those elements?
Yeah, I think so. I think that's a factual determination you guys can make, but, you know, I think it's fair to say, if you're looking at this section of the property that will be used related to the takeout, it's bigger, as Brett said, if you color code it, right?
Yeah.
It's just a lot more of that property. The second sentence in the definition of accessory structure use then also says, accessory uses when aggregated shall not subordinate principal use of the lot. I think that's what you've been talking about, Brett, does, you know, all this added together, you know, is the, the restaurant be subordinating the principal use to the house? So it's kind of the flip side to look at it, but.
Yeah.
What I'm hearing, I just, I say this because what I'm hearing from two members of the board is it's, it's not satisfying that the section of the definition is discussed. I'm hearing from one or the other, but I don't want to put words in your mouth that you're saying.
Yeah, I'm, I'm still working through it. I, you know, it is interesting to me, and I've just come up with a, an analogy. You know, to, to have the residential, the residence occupied by a fisherman that then is going to sell their product on the property, it is an interesting connection. And I was thinking, you know, it'd be, like, if a woodworker, cabinet maker, you know, opened up a shop and was selling cabinets or stuff they made, and, you know, is that, but I, 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 what I, I don't think, though, it's still a residence. Like, I don't think just because the business is tied, is connected to the profession of the resident, does not necessarily mean that it's connected to a, that use is connected to a residence. I, I, I love it, though. I mean, I, like, I-
Would you look at the zone too, where it's a residential business zone? Or is it just residential?
Well, it, it, it's, that's not the problem. It's not that it's not a permitted use. It's the, it's that it's, it's the math problem.
And I think, Brett, if the cabinet maker was selling small things out of a small shop, don't agree with that. But the cabinet maker became a contractor who was building, you know, like, big panels, you know, mobile homes, moving trailers, and like, taking up a lot of the lot space with the business, it might not, you know, assuming that we have the same property size, then at that point, that business becomes not subordinate to the residence.
Yeah.
And we cross the same threshold, or we failed to cross the same threshold.
Well, we talked about, so we went into what executive session, we'll just tell you what we're talking about. One of the things that we've talked about was, there is this threshold question that we could, you know, we could do this a few different ways, but I, I personally, you know, we could raise that, vote on it. It's, it's an up or down thing, right? I mean, if it, if it's no, then it's, we're done. Because we don't even get, you don't even get to the performance evaluation, you know, if you, if you don't just meet the planned use ordinance, in terms of lot size and whatnot. We could go through all the other stuff anyway. I don't think it makes sense for us to do that, personally, because I think, well, I think, well, I just don't think it does, but, I guess we can see. Do you want to?
Yeah, we do want to vote. Sure, let's, let's sort of get to that point, if we get to that point, and then we can talk about the implications of it, a little, a little more depth. I think I'll walk it through before actually turning to a motion, but I think that if we look at the definition and the ordinance, I'm sort of pushing the, I'm, I'm not going to cite the case precedent, but I think looking at the definition of the ordinance and asking, is the proposal incidental to the residential use? I think for me, it does not feel like it's incidental or accessory or subordinate when I think about the aggregate property use. And I think that I would cite the site plan. And maybe leave it at that in terms of the, you know, we're really sort of focused on the balance between residential use.
I guess site plan and, and I think that's all I'm looking at right now. Yeah, and as much as it pains me to say, I think I would, I would agree. I just don't think as proposed, I don't think, I think that, that I'm calling it the math problem is a, is a real problem, the way our ordinance is written. I think you need 20,000 more square feet, you'd be fine. I think you could probably do a home occupation, maybe. That's not the application before us.
That's right.
I don't know what, you know, I'll leave it at that. Well, you've already, you haven't moved, right?
What's that?
You haven't moved, you still in the same space?
No, I'm still in the same space.
Ah, I hear you.
I think we need, either we need to go through the site review, or we need to say, doesn't meet the requirement, so that they can either do what they need to do or resubmit an application that would meet our requirements for home use.
Great. Let's talk about that more, but let's get through this motion and make sure we have a determination. Because that's actually, yeah, we haven't even determined that the application isn't. We've got another one after this to see, because it's possible that if this could be a principal use, we'll make that determination next, but, do you want to make a motion?
Not really.
Are you willing to make a motion?
No. What, what, what would it be? What, what do we?
I think that it's, the, the motion has to do with, does this application meet the definition of accessory structure or use?
Yeah.
I'm willing to do it if you.
Sure.
Sure, I'll share that, that love. So I'll make a motion that the application does not meet the definition of accessory structure or use. Because per the site plan as submitted, the aggregated use of the building, the parking, and the driveway, and the sitting area is not incidental, accessory, or subordinate to the principal residential use on the property and on the lot. That's my motion. Is there a second?
Yeah, I'm going to have to second. I don't want to, but I got to do it. I think it's, I think it's the right call, unfortunately.
Yeah. Is there any discussion beyond, in addition to that? All right. I'll call for a vote. All in favor? All opposed? Let's carry. And so the, I think, final pathway towards sort of compliance would be if this application were a principal use. And I think there we go to the RB. What section is this? In the standards for the zone, the zone standards, general zone standards, we've got the, in RB, the lot standard, minimum lot area is, if this, how's this work? If this were sort of residential or principal non-residential structure, I see, right. So the lot standards per paragraph 4B to A state that the minimum lot area per residential dwelling or principal non-residential structure is 40,000 square feet. And given the existing residential structure that's on the site, this proposal for the commercial Captain's Tails takeout, there's not an additional 40,000 square feet. There's only, something like 19,000 square feet or 21,000 square, something like that. And so there's not enough square footage on the lot to allow a permit, a principal use for this.
A second, yeah.
Just a
Yes, please.
minor clarification. Technically, it's principal non-residential structure, I believe the language.
Uh-huh.
Which would be the hose, the, the house a non-residential use.
Great. So the structure.
Words.
Yep, with words. That's all, that's all we got tonight. Right. And so the structure, in this case, is the building.
Is the restaurant.
The restaurant building.
Yeah.
And that is not permitted or-
They need, under that language, each primary or principal structure, be it residential or commercial, each requires, if you have primary, each requires 40,000 square feet.
Makes sense. Thoughts before we move to the motions? Want to do it?
Not really.
I'll make a motion that the proposal, the, the application does not meet the residential business zone lot standard for minimum, minimum lot area, because the principal non-residential structure would require an additional 40,000 square feet, which is not on the, not part of the lot.
Yeah, 20, it's not 40,000, we require additional 20 or whatever.
Uh, correct, that's right.
I think you want to make sure, if you can, you have the actual number.
Good, okay, great. I can do that.
Get 60,984.
Is the lot size? So they all amend or try my motion again, which is that I make a motion that the application does not meet the minimum lot area standards per paragraph 4B to A, which require the principal non-residential structure to, to have 40,000 square feet. The existing lot size of 60,984 square feet does not allow two principal uses. And there's already an existing residential use.
Second.
Motion and second on the table. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? So at this point, we've determined that the application, that there's no path towards compliance for the application. And as Brett and Ben have mentioned, we could proceed and review the applications, the performance standards of the application. And I think it's the, I think that the board agrees that it's in, but the applicant's, well, yeah, we won't tell you what's in your best interest, but our, the sort of cleanness and straightforward is for us to leave this application as denied. And so that if it gives you the opportunity to either appeal this decision or resubmit an application that would be different from it, and, and that we're happy to review those, you know, submissions of the appeal if determined that we would respond to that as needed. Would you like to add anything, Patrick, about possible next steps?
No, I, well, I think, so by, you say, by your motion, you know, the application does not meet the zoning requirements, you know, you didn't necessarily say in your motion, but the application is denied on those grounds. So you may want to make a motion.
I think we will probably do that, right.
Yeah, make a motion to deny the application based on failure to meet the zoning requirements.
All right.
Just to make me happy with that.
Yep.
Then the next step would be, I haven't, we could draft, we draft written findings and conclusions, and I can draft those. Based on what I heard tonight, I'll need to get a little information about the previous meeting, but I think we have enough that I'll get there. At your next, how often do you guys meet?
Every two weeks, sort of.
So two weeks.
Okay. We typically meet every two weeks.
So your next meeting, you would, you would have a draft that I'm moving together, and you would just vote whether or not to adopt it, but it basically says, this is what happened.
Yep.
And then that document is what the applicant can either use to appeal to the Board of Appeals. I believe, again, I'm new to this game with Tremont, but I believe you all like that you have a Board of Appeals.
We do, yeah.
So go to the Board of Appeals.
Yeah.
And then if they just so desire, they could go to law or to Superior Board after that. So it's that document is the triggers that, you know, the appeal carrier puts.
Yeah.
But to your point, they can either appeal and, you know, argue that you got it wrong.
Yep.
And if it's overturned, then you come back and have all the application materials. You already had a hearing where, you know, information was submitted, and then you can start working through the review standards. Or they can not appeal and, you know, bring in a new application that tries to satisfy the issue regarding the accessory structure and such.
Is that, any questions for Patrick?
No.
Then I think that our next step is to have a motion to deny the application for failure to meet the zone requirements. I'll make a motion to deny the application for failure to meet the zone requirements.
Second.
Motion second on the table. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? You want to abstain?
Abstain.
Abstain. Two, zero, one. Did that right. And now we just ask you to create a findings fact? Do we need a motion for that?
You can order me.
I demand that.
You can, I will, if you like, I'll draft findings fact.
Please.
While that you can, that officiate, finalize, enter.
Great, thank you, I appreciate that. I think that concludes the official business for Captain's Tails. And unless there's an objection from the board, I welcome comments or. And unless there's an objection from the board, I welcome comments or questions from Derek, yeah, go ahead.
Do we get any official response to that here?
Tonight?
Yeah.
I think that, so official response to what?
Just based on your vote, do we get a response, like, I guess I could ask you my question.
Sure.
Because I, I would just like, we need to like, have understanding of the threshold of size to make it, you know, to define it as an accessory use, who looked at the site plan and said, yes, this looks fine for the use. But we would like to ask you provide, in the future.
Yep.
Not tonight.
Yep.
What is that threshold to meet a definition of accessory use?
Yep.
Structure, lot use size, what's going on there? So, just a little background, why the lot looks like that, is we're going to build the application, you're trying to build it to meet the satisfactory design, planning board, you know, parking lot sizes, places people sit down.
Sure, yeah.
Parkings there for people to sit down, though these were just, you know, to make it look good. The intention was to only have takeout, take food, and whatever.
Yep.
So, I think unfortunately, to make it, you know, meet requirements of the ordinance, and it ultimately is created to be no longer accessory.
Yep.
So, to understand what the town puts on a size threshold for accessory use, it's not just square footage, but I guess, you know, parts of the envelope, parts of the accessory use. And, you know, to keep it subordinated.
Right.
To the primary structure.
I think that from a process standpoint, my recommendation would, I mean, so Patrick's going to write up a findings, is it called a findings of fact?
Yeah, findings of fact.
Great. And bring that to our next meeting, like, that process has to keep going for this application. Sounds to me like what you're suggesting is like questions about a next application, I think makes sense, or a modification to this one. And I think I would, like, the idea of like a pre-application conference or like a pre-application meeting seems like the right venue for that.
Not necessarily that, but how, you know, if you make that determination, like, you know, you need definition to how, what, how you're making that determination to that process.
So I think that what I would suggest would be to add for our next meeting, separate from reviewing Patrick's, would be a, I would call it a pre-application conference meeting? There's some term for it in our ordinance, but where we get to like talk to an applicant before there's an actual application in front of us. And we can like talk about that and, and have a sort of like open conversation, if it's on our agenda ahead of time. I'm sort of hesitant to try to get into it tonight because it's not on our agenda to...
I understand that.
Talk about, and...
Would they be, would they be able to do that with the code enforcement office?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, Patrick, other thoughts on that?
Your, what you're proposing makes a lot of sense, and it's kind of, it's best practice. Yeah, they can have conversations with the code enforcement officer and any other town staff, and, you know, during, but then, ultimately, the planning board is the decision maker to sit down and talk through this issue in that pre-application meeting to get a better, to see if everyone can get on the same page on this issue, what that looks like.
Yep.
And then, and then they can proceed with submitting an actual application and proceed from there.
That makes sense, and, you know, it sounds good, but we, you know, we've done lots of pre-meetings, discussed the project, and, and I think it comes down to the vagueness and decision-making on some words that are, you know, it's a frustrating process to feel like you have these meetings and discussion with code enforcement in play or before this point.
Yep.
Sort of to continue on, just so we're not looking at any of the other items on this application tonight, is that's not an option? Because I feel like that further reduces that discussion for, for, I don't know, what we're doing.
So, two things. One, I think what was interesting is I was listening to, you know, the different thoughts about this, was that the home occupation is twenty-five percent of the size, so that's an interesting number, right? And that takes you out of this, trying to connect it to a residential, you know, subordinate to a residential use, it's just its own thing, I think. So that's one place to start. Second, you know, we, we talked about going through all of this, but I don't think we can do it. We can sit here for a couple hours if you want, but this isn't the application that's, I don't think you're going to win. We can do that if you want.
No, I don't think we're, I don't think it's, in my opinion, I don't think it's worth appealing this application. I don't, I, I think that there's too much ground on calling it an accessory at this point, it was in space, I agree.
Yeah.
So then it doesn't make sense for us to go through all that because the application that we might review in the future is going to be different than this one here, I think.
But I do, maybe we don't get it, I don't know. But I do think, I mean, when you come back for pre-application, if it's a little bit different, and you don't need to finish the application before you come back, we could actually go through that in a not, like, official, we're not making determinations, but we may be able to have a conversation about some things that might, something like red flags, things that we want to pay attention to, and we could have a sort of look at that without making a determination or finding a fact, because that's what we want to make sure we sort of do a process about.
But I think you've got ninety percent of it already done.
Go ahead, Patrick.
Yeah, no, just, I think this all makes a lot of sense. I don't know if there, you know, obviously there are points to this project as well, if there's an opportunity to discuss alternative designs that satisfy both the ordinance and potentially the butters, I mean, this is a good opportunity to see if everyone can come to it down for a moment. So, you know, that's all, obviously, that.
As well, I want to acknowledge your frustration. I hear that. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you as well, everybody. I think I'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is new business, to look at a staircase to the shore. Stay away to have it.
Stay away to have it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do you need any further legal counsel on the other issues?
I don't think so. I think we can relieve you of your duties and you can...
The lawyers can lead. Muddle through it.
That's the first time I've been asked one of these.
Welcome back, Beth.
Thank you.
So glad you're here.
Missed you.
We missed you up here. Let's see, this, this, this. So, I handed out, Beth, did you get one of these drawings?
Yes, right.
Great.
Right here.
So this was submitted tonight, it's sort of an accompaniment to this application. I think we can, I don't see an issue in accepting it, it's sort of not our typical practice, but given the complexity of the application, which is not very complex, I think that, and the information on this drawing, I think that it's acceptable, but wanted to check with the board before doing so.
Well, since it's isn't here, we can't.
So, we've lost, we'll wait until Katie gets back so that we don't get too far ahead.
He's a good neighbor to other people besides other people.
Welcome back, Katie, thank you. John Duffy, welcome to the planning board.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight. Do you want to just give us a brief introduction to the project or the proposal and help us understand what we're looking at?
For, for fifty or sixty years, there was a chicken run, which is like a ramp that goes to your chicken house with the cleats on it, that we went down to the shore so we could go roll in our skiff. And when the surge came along, it sort of took it away. And so, all I'm going to do now is, because I'm a little older than I was, is to have stairs rather than a ramp. But from exactly the same place on the bank, to exactly the same place on the loess where the other one was, and you see that that is well above the high water line. And I don't know where else to grab the other questions, but it should be as simple as that.
Great.
You did include pictures for you all?
Pictures of the...
If you would like to look at my color copy.
I was very stingy and I couldn't make my color copies.
We appreciate the black and white. Very legible. Derek, you drew this?
I, I did.
Can you just share a little bit about, just talk through what we're looking at?
I'm not familiar with the whole application, what's being asked or submitted.
Yep, that's fine.
Provide, because we, we had done our survey, because we're the butter for John, so in our survey...
Who's we, just identify.
Thurston's office.
Thank you, yep.
Thurston's has done a biometric survey, and it lands it for that lot, and it did that for joint neighbors. So it includes the information on John's property that shows the high water line, and his existing ramp's location to where it was. So it provides property endpoints and stuff like that.
Is that what the circle is, with, that's the property line?
Right, which John has the upper water as well.
Great, and so we're reviewing this under the land use ordinance, and this is a little bit different from our other applications. And Katie, could you just give a, we're looking at paragraph?
E is on page sixty-six of the new ordinance, it's under review authority. So, in chapter one thousand from the DEP, there are requirements for the stairs, they can be no wider than four feet, but they're, each shoreland property is entitled to one set of stairs down to the water so they have safe access. These are the standards in the ordinance that best fit, Jesse helped me determine which standards we go by. Normally in the chapter one thousand, it is a CEO permit, but in our ordinance is planning board, and that's why it's here for you guys to go with the standards.
Are we enforcing the DEP standards, like the four feet wide?
Yeah, it's not allowed to be wider than four feet, that's in here as well.
And is it, but I'm sorry, is that, oh, that is in our...
Yes, that is in our necessary ordinance.
Great.
DEP is below the high water mark.
Yes. That is why.
Oh, their jurisdiction is below the high water mark?
So that's why we didn't need a permit by rule?
No, you wouldn't need it to be at all.
Oh, perfect.
Okay, so this is solely in our jurisdiction?
Yes.
Well, how come we had to make a, I had to pay three hundred and seventy dollars to the DEP to get what they call a permit by rule?
Because you're adjacent to a water body.
Adjacent to a water body.
They shouldn't have.
They shouldn't, for all of this, I mean, all these surge things and the destruction, I mean...
Page ten at the bottom, you can find stairs and structures.
Everybody, all, all these thousands of people that had their neighbors?
Yeah, they want their three hundred and seven dollars, it's ridiculous, sorry, that's my problem.
Katie, what was that paragraph?
It's page ten.
You said page ten, but I'm looking at a different issue.
A, and it should be article four A to C.
Article four on page ten?
Of the new one, yes, sorry.
The bottom?
Yes.
Four A to C.
Stay away.
Right where you told me it was. Great, thank you.
Your fault.
Any other questions before we dive through? Do we need a motion for each of these?
Just for the entirety of the application.
Entire, thank you, great. So, the permitting authority shall review, great, okay. Will, requirement one, will the application, or will the project maintain safe and healthful conditions? I don't think, no, we don't need a motion, we just need to discuss, and if there's anything...
It's not held railing on both sides of the steps.
Seems like it's safe, seems like it's safer than the chicken run that used to be there.
Yes.
Exactly.
Will it result in water pollution, erosion, or sedimentation to service waters?
No.
I would even argue that it will help prevent...
Help it.
Erosion. Will it add it?
Do you mind just saying met or not met, I apologize?
That's fine, we think that this is met. Requirement B, met. So requirement C, will adequately provide for the disposal of all wastewater?
Not met.
Not applicable? I think not applicable, okay. D, will it have an adverse impact on the spawning grounds for fish, aquatic life, bird, or other wildlife habitat? Met?
Not applicable.
I would say met, because I think that we want to make a determination that this construction project does not impact the spawning grounds.
Okay.
You ready with that, Beth?
I agree.
Okay, thanks. E, will conserve shore cover and visual as well as actual points of access to inland and coastal waters? Yes. It is met. Provide access, yep, I'm moving through them, but shouted, I'm going too fast or something. Will protect archeologic and historic resources as designated in the comprehensive plan? Not applicable. Will it adversely affect existing commercial fishing or maritime activities in a CFMA zone? We probably are in the CFMA zone? Or harbor shoreline. So then, maybe not applicable?
Was on the map upstairs?
The red area?
Is the vault, is right next to this? Yeah. So this is not the same map that's upstairs?
So it's a CFMA?
That map does look different.
This is not the same map that's upstairs.
That map's different than the one that used to be there.
That's not the same map that is in my office.
We don't know what zone is it?
That says twenty twenty, CF.
CFMA in twenty twenty.
According to the one I have upstairs, it's harbor shoreline.
Do you know what year your map is? Do I have a map in here?
No, I do not believe it.
Thanks, Katie.
Yeah.
I don't know if it matters that much, but might as well.
But that is a different map up there.
Hopefully that one's accurate, and the map in the CEO office should be accurate. It's a little embarrassing if it's not.
It would be nice.
Kind of wrong with the zoning on some of this, maybe it's a line, just like smooth line.
Right through a property line.
Bet you brings the map, what do you have?
Or we just hear like ripping off the handle, down on the wall. Exactly. Can you believe it?
I stand corrected, that is my mistake.
Your, your map is old?
Right on the border of it.
Oh, no, you have the right map?
Yeah.
Great, I mean, it's good that you have the right map, it's okay that you made, so, okay, so we're in CFMA zone?
Yes.
All right, so, will the project adversely affect existing commercial fishing or maritime activities in a CFMA zone?
That helps me fix the waters of time, speed to the shore.
So I think that this is met, applicable and met.
Okay.
Will this project avoid problems associated with floodplain development and use? Proposed stairs will not cause any problems with floodplain development. Met. Yeah. All right, do we want to attach restrictions or conditions as we deem necessary? No. No.
Well, the sign that says private, Thurston's lots of bound customers are not allowed.
There you go.
I'm gonna. Not.
You don't want him down there getting hurt.
That's right.
All right, I'll take a motion to approve the staircase.
To heaven.
To heaven for.
He's got lids up like.
I don't know. At 14 steamboat wharf road.
I'll make a motion that we approve the applications presented.
I'll second.
Motion second. All, any discussion? All in favor? Passes.
Must be able to say yes to one.
Sure is.
John, John Fernandez, when he heard that this had to happen, he said, I'm not cutting a single piece of that lumber until after the 28th.
Tell him to get to work tomorrow morning.
Cause he done work today.
Yeah, that's right, that's right. Oh, nice, okay. That's gonna be a nice staircase. That's gonna be a nice staircase.
It is.
A bocalized.
He's gonna build it as teak.
So, now, do we have any more? That would be the previous one, so that I could put the new one in, or do we have any pending for the?
Applications.
Land use ordinances?
The one was the only, application was the only one.
And that's been denied, so the new one would follow this?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
We never heard.
Yeah, update, update the binder. Any others, any CEO issues?
Not this one.
Any other discussion items?
We never heard anything back from, um, the seafood catch on their war that they wanted to build?
No, the only thing I received from them was a discharge, but that's a year, or two year. That's all I've got.
Oh, man. I was gonna say, I won't do it tonight. Maybe if you put it on the agenda for next month, uh, June.
You're only, uh, I'm blind.
The 25th.
Thank you.
Yeah.
The 25th.
Well, according to your agenda, I'm trusting that, but.
Yeah, no, you're right, I just can't see over there.
Yeah.
Talk about industrial solar. Yeah, because I'm gonna make a motion that the planning board submits to the board of selectmen a ballot question for the November election to see whether or not we wanna pursue industrial, commercial, um, solar firms in, in Tremont. I know Mac had said that we were gonna be starting to come up with the, with new standards, uh, standards for Tremont where we don't allow it.
Somebody wants to put on the ballot as to.
Yes, yeah. What, what I'm proposing to put on the ballot is to get feedback from the.
Oh, okay.
Do you want the planning board to pursue.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
Developing standards for industrial, commercial, solar in Tremont. And then, rather than go through all of the meetings and all coming up with the standards, I mean, I've talked to some people and no one I've talked to is interested in it.
Interesting.
Yeah, so.
Save a lot of time on that.
So, you know, save us time if we get.
Yeah.
That way we'd get, and whereas, whereas the presidential, presidential election, I'm assuming there's gonna be a big turnout, so we'll probably, we'd get a real good feel of.
Flavor.
The residents want, so rather than come to develop the standards, take it to town meeting, let's wait, find out if they want us to develop standards.
So, to get that figured out ASAP, we would have July to do that, because I would need to give it to Sarah in August.
You mean the?
All of the information. There's a 90-day period before it has to be put on the ballot?
Okay, now, is, is that by petition? Or is that by, can the selectmen put something on of the rolling?
That's if you go, if you want to present something to the select board and it's not going to be an open town meeting and has to be presented to Sarah with all of the information at least 90 days in advance of the election. And she gave me those dates, I have them upstairs.
Okay. So, and I talked to Jesse about this one a bit, so I'll, I'll confer with him and then we can go from there.
I just wanted to let you know there is a time for it.
So, we only have one meeting next month?
Oh, that'd be nice.
So, due to.
We got a rock, put it under a rock.
The 11th?
I don't know.
The 11th?
I think so.
No, we don't have the 11th.
Yeah, yeah, you have a.
Just the 25th.
Just the 25th. Due to something else that, and I apologize, I don't have my schedule.
No, not right now.
Something else. So, the only one we do have in June is the 25th and then we have, it looks like July 9th and 20 something, 23rd.
I will be here on the 25th of June.
Okay.
I will be in Sacramento, unfortunately.
You'll be there in Washington.
So, I make a motion that our next meeting would be June 25th at 6 o'clock in the Javi Kelly Meeting Room.
Second.
Motion second on the table? Any discussion?
That's my first.
Yeah, there you go. All in favor? Thank you.
Won't be here, but I'm in favor.
Motion adjourned?
Can I make a motion when you do that?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, everybody, for tolerating me.
This was a hard one.
This was a tricky one.
Yeah, I didn't like it.
I know, I could tell.
Yeah.
I just couldn't, I can't. I didn't like it.
Katie, will you turn off the video? Will you turn the video off? Thanks.
I talk to Ann every month, I'll tell her, I'm gonna tell them all.